All right, good evening. The time being seven oh one on May twenty fourth, two thousand twenty one. A quorum of the planning board being present. Call this meeting to order. Just for those at home, anyone wishing to call in when we reach the public comment section. The telephone number is nine seven eight seven seven one zero eight one nine. We get to that section. You call in. If you get a busy, busy signal, then just call back. It gets you into the queue for what you need to comment on. All right. First order of business. Actually, I guess I might make this announcement upfront, too. This looks like it will be our last remote meeting. We will be back in town hall and all those with business before the planning board. Should meet us there, starting with our June fourteenth, two thousand twenty one meeting. So before we get too far, I'd like to thank all those who helped us, Brian, with all of our technical difficulties and efforts over the past year plus in trying to do this as best we could to get the people's business done. So, thank you.
So, Mr. Johnson, with that comment, have all the applicants that are coming up for the June fourth meeting been notified of that? I guess that should be the answer.
Fourteenth meeting. I suspect that they will be. I don't know if they have been, but.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, so the office today emailed the applicants to notify them.
All right.
About that, yeah.
About the public, Anna? I mean, how do we go about notifying the public? Either the town board or town website?
Um, so when the agenda is posted, it will be put on there like a normal that we will be at town hall. There's so.
So we aren't the first board doing that. Did I hear the school committee met last week in public?
Um, yeah, I believe they may, they may have met in person. Um, I'm not sure if we're the first. Yeah, so I know the selectmen are meeting tomorrow to discuss this matter also about the town's local state of emergency. So I would suggest anyone interested in that to just watch that meeting or follow that the minutes for that as well. I'm sure the details on how the town's handling it.
All right, moving on to agenda item A, approval of minutes, May tenth, two thousand twenty one.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of May tenth, two thousand twenty one as written.
All right, we have a motion made. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Fowler.
Hi.
Mr. Fratalla.
Hi.
Mr. Delaney.
Hi.
Chair votes aye as well, four zero. All right, moving on to agenda item B, B one, committee reports. Many of the members have any committee reports they wish to make at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I have my local housing partnership met on May nineteenth. We, um, on the agenda, we discussed the scope of a consultant hiring to come on board to help, to help, I've helped the local housing partnership board. We discussed their duties and responsibilities and they were approved and now we're moving forward to find a suitable applicant to help us on the local housing partnership board. So, that was it.
Very good, thank you. Any other committee reports?
All set.
Hearing none. Moving on to agenda item B two, town planners report.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. So, I just had two items there. You already announced that our next planning board meeting will be in person on June fourteenth. And all other meetings going forward for us will be in person, I've been told. And then the second item was following up to your question on allowing, um, the board can make a motion to require when the application is submitted on behalf of a property owner that in addition to the signature that's required on the application, that we would like to have an actual letter. So I would need to have a motion from the board to make that change.
Okay. Is that something the board wants to do?
Well, I think it would clarify some issues for us, Mr. Chairman, as far as a situation that happened at last meeting where we had an owner that was not willing to have his property changed commercial. We were not aware of that, so I think we should do something along those same lines. It's, it's a, it's a representative of the owner. It's going to be presenting to us at the board, so at least we have that permission.
Yeah, I guess I would tend to agree because I just don't think if they got to get the signature anyways, I don't see how getting the signature on a letter that just simply says, I, you know, grant whoever authority to, you know, represent me in the hearing or something along those lines would be too difficult or onerous for the, uh, for those representing an applicant.
Mr. Fowler, what do you think? You've been around longer than anybody.
Oh, thanks. Thank you for that. What I think is I'll make a motion to, uh, follow suit with this.
All right, so we have a motion. Okay, so we have a motion made to require the letter from an owner. We have a second. So, Mr. Fowler.
Aye.
Mr. Fratalla.
Aye.
Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, four zero. All right, great, thank you. Moving on to agenda item C, eighteen sixty six Main Street, continuation of special permit. Do we have anyone here for eighteen sixty six Main Street?
Hi, Todd Austin, I'll tell you, Cucciella's Bakery. How's everybody doing tonight?
Very good.
Very well.
All right, the floor is yours.
Well, basically, I just, from last meeting, I know this was a continuation to put everything in paper. Attorney Ross is here to fill everything in. I just wanted to thank everybody, ladies, gentlemen, everyone, for all your time you put into this. It's really exciting and I'm really looking forward to it and I, I can't thank you enough for all your time that you've given me. But the, the rest of it would be for Mr. Ross to speak on. He knows the, you know, obviously the legal parts of what he needs to do. If I could give the board to him.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. So, since the last meeting, I know Todd has been working on interior design plans. Nothing has changed with respect to what he presented to the board at the last meeting. I did get a copy of, uh, the waiver documents, a comment from, uh, Ms. McGinty and also the draft special conditions. So I'll just quickly run through those. The comment is that there's a, uh, a mislabelling of two parking spaces on our, on the most recent plan we submitted. Uh, we'll get that corrected and submitted for final record copy. The total number of spaces is still correct. It's just they, they labeled forty two and forty three twice instead of making it forty five and forty six and forty seven, I think it's. So that's not a problem. We'll take care of that. We did submit a revised plan that showed the stuff that we talked about at the last meeting, most notably spaces seventy five, seventy six and seventy seven, which are out here. The drive-through will have employee-only parking signs. That's also one of the draft special conditions. So both, I represent the landlord, but both the landlord and the tenant don't have a problem with that. The second special conditions was a dumpster shall be enclosed with a fence. There's already two dumpsters on the property enclosed in a fence and the tenant expects to use those dumpsters. So we don't think we're expanding that at all, but the, the draft special condition is perfectly fine. If there was ever another dumpster, it would be enclosed per the border health requirements. And then I had no problems with the waivers. They looked great. I, and I think, I think we're all set unless the board has some questions.
All right, we'll run through. Start with Mr. Fratalla.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Ross, I do have a couple of questions and one was the size of the handicap spaces. So you're looking for a waiver to reduce the size of the space for handicaps, correct?
Yes, I believe they are just a little bit smaller. I, I'm not uh, the van spaces, they're labelled on the plan and I can actually share the screen. I think I can show the screen.
But they're not standard size, correct?
I believe they are a little bit undersized, yes. And that's to prevent, uh, changing the size of the parking lot. Uh, so they, they change, if you look at, uh, can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
All right. So we're right here, uh, you know, unit one's the bakery. Uh, we have added van spacings, uh, handicap spaces, which weren't there before. If I go up plan a little bit, the two existing handicap spaces are thirty and thirty one. Those are already there, uh, but we're trying to upgrade and add the van spaces in, but to make them work, they had to be a little bit narrower on the actual space, but then there's still the, the area for, uh, the wheelchair available right here.
Okay, so that's only to accommodate the two van spaces, correct?
Correct, because we're adding those to an existing parking layout. Yes, that's correct.
All right. So my question is, can we do anything to make those handicap spaces not require a waiver? I would hate to have a spot smaller than that's needed for a handicap person, especially with the condition that they have. I would rather make a spot somewhere else smaller where it's a generalized parking spot rather than the van space just for the purposes of, uh, giving the handicapped as much assistance as necessary, so.
Understood. Uh, I would have to talk to the engineer about that. Uh, I think he did reduce some of these spaces right here anyway. I would have to come back to you on that.
Okay, I mean, I don't have a problem reducing one of the other sizes a little bit or, or even a couple of them smaller wise. Even space forty, if you could reduce space forty a little bit smaller where it's on the end there, where you have a little bit of room there.
Hold on just a second.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, if worst case, what I could say is.
Hate to interrupt.
Mr. Ross, one second.
I'm sorry, Chair.
Yeah, we're, I hate to, the reason I'm interrupting is we're stepping on someone else's shoes, toes. This is a building inspector's. We can't waive this. So my suggestion would be find a space you can eliminate and use whatever is necessary out of that space. Or take some, I'm not sure how wide the sidewalk is between the two spaces or how, what are you lacking on those handicap spaces? Do you know?
I believe it, it's either six inches or a foot on, on those spaces. So we could eliminate a space, which is exactly where I was going. We could eliminate one of these spaces, but then we would need a waiver for one space on a total space count.
I agree with Mr. Fratalla. I would rather do that than, uh, waive the size of the handicap spots, but we can't waive it anyway. So that's my point. It's a building inspector domain, so.
Okay.
Well, since you have to, may I make a suggestion? Since you already have to re, uh, you have to already have to fix this to account for your double use of the number forty two?
Yes.
In this case, why, why don't we just have you eliminate one, you know, one of the forty twos, however you want to do it. Well, eliminate the forty two. Just do your renumbering and that, that way you can spread out the two van spaces.
That'd be great. So we would add a waiver for one total space and I will have the engineer adjust that plan so that actually if we do that, I believe you could make almost all of those spaces comply. Be very close.
That'd be good.
Yeah, I think that's, that was my, that was my intention. I hate to see somebody come into a space and not have enough space, especially with the handicap conditions. So, um, so that was one of my questions and, um, my other question is on the plan, and I would, I'd like to talk to Mr. Austin about this. So are we not having any seating inside the building at all? Or is there, are, is there seating inside? Todd, I think you're on mute.
I'm sorry. It'll, it'll be moderate seating. It's not somewhere like, um, it was like we hoped to wait on people. But if someone did come in handicap that wanted to sit at the table and enjoy cannoli or, you know, a piece of pie before they went on their way, I, I, that's, we're hoping to have that available. Sometimes people like to just come in and just sit down for a minute. But it wasn't something that we would want, like a longevity seating area or anything towards that. But the, the possibility being there that you could have, sit down for a few minutes or whatever.
See, I don't think the possibility issue can just be left open. I mean, your plan shows now, uh, unit one, new eighteen-seat bakery and deli. So the eighteen seats I'm sure are inside. So if that is not the case, then we have to adjust that or else leave it and, and have eighteen seats inside.
Well, yeah.
I mean, because people are going to be asking, people are going to be listening to these meetings saying, yeah, we can go inside and eat, have a coffee and a bagel or, or, or a cannoli or whatever. So if that's the case, then I think, um, we have to do one or the other. So just.
Yeah, I mean, I would hope to keep that, you know, because I love to give the, the, you know, the public the opportunity to do so.
Sure, I agree.
Kind of confusing with the restaurant style, what I'm really not looking for. But the seating for people to sit would be fantastic.
Okay, fine. So, so you're going to accommodate that's eighteen seats inside per se, right? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
All right, with that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Fratalla. Mr. Delaney.
Uh, I'm all set as well, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Fowler.
Can we rectify the problem so we won't need a variance at all? Is, um, if they reduced the tables by one and had fifteen seats in the bakery, then you could reduce, um, a parking space outside and not need a variance or waiver, I mean.
So, Mr. Chairman, may I add something to that? Um, for the drive-through, it's done by the square feet of that unit. For that particular one that we're talking about, unit number one. So that's how there's only by one, Appendix C, item nineteen, is that calculated?
Okay, so in this case, we're not using the seats. We're using the fact that they have the drive-through.
It's a drive-through and then it's done by the square feet. So, um, it's one space, parking space for every two hundred uh, feet of floor area.
Okay.
All right.
And if I could add something as well, uh, that two hundred, one per two hundred square feet is exactly the same as the bank was. So the, the parking requirement hasn't actually changed, even though the use has changed from a bank to a bakery.
Okay. Floor is still yours, Mr. Fowler, if you have anything else?
I'm all set.
All right. All right, so, yeah, I think I agree with everybody else as far as I'd rather do the, uh, the waiver for one space and have the, you know, the handicap spaces comply, you know, make, make those compliant and then, you know, I'm fine with doing the waiver for the other spaces, but obviously you might as well get as close as you can to correct size uh, using the space you have now that the space will be eliminated. Uh, but I'm, I'm not going to get into inches on each space at this point to change the waiver. Um, I think we can just leave it the way it is and then, if the spaces exceed the eight point five because there's space now, that's fine. Probably make more sense. Otherwise, I believe I am all set as well. So we, let's, let's just run through like the waivers. So we need to alter waiver number two to remove the portion about the handicap accessible spaces. Is it possible to bring up the waivers?
Uh, I don't have those electronically here.
Sorry, I was, I was, I was speaking to Ms. McGinty. I apologize.
Okay.
Um, yes, I can. I'll share my content now. All right, so can you see my screen?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, in the meantime, do you want to ask if there's any audience?
Yes. So, Brian, we'll open it up to the audience now. Brian, do we have anyone on the line?
We have no callers, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so while we give the lag time, uh, a few seconds to catch up. So you, you've already crossed out the handicap language.
Yeah.
And it would appear you are adding the one-space waiver language without even being asked. So that's perfect.
So, um, yeah, so this is going to be Appendix C and then it's, um, for item number nineteen, which is for the bakery. To waive one space for a total of seventy six spaces. And this will just be a draft form and I'll probably just edit it tomorrow for the final special permit if it is voted on.
Excellent. All right. And you guys realize, you know, you do, you're going to need to submit a revised plan just to, to show all this for the office, all right?
Yes, and we'll, we will, uh, when we finalize the location of the grease interceptor, uh, we'll put that on there as well and just have one plan that comes in the office.
Excellent. All right, and then the members are okay with the draft special conditions as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. All right, we've given the audience enough time to catch up. Uh, Brian, there's still no calls, I suspect.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so what is the pleasure of the board?
Close the hearing, Mr. Chairman.
All right, a motion made. Do I have a second?
I can.
All right, a motion made and seconded. Uh, Mr. Fratalla.
Aye.
Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
Mr. Fowler.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well, four zero. All right, as to the waivers requested by the applicant, what is the pleasure of the board?
Approve the waivers as submitted.
All right, so we're going to approve the three waivers as shown on the screen now and as discussed this evening. Uh, sections, uh, five, four, two, one, five, one, four, zero, and Appendix C. All right, so we have that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Mr. Fratalla.
Aye.
Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
Mr. Fowler.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, four zero. All right, as to the special permit as requested, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the special permit request from eighteen sixty six Main Street, Cucciella's Bakery.
All right, and that will include the special conditions which are currently showing on the screen.
And the waivers discussed.
Right, which are numbered one and two, uh, with also with the understanding that the applicant has to submit a revised plan.
Yep.
And, Mr. Chairman, may I add something? The only edit I made to the conditions was under number two. I just made that plural for the dumpsters so that it'll cover that in the future.
Perfect. All right, so we have a motion made and seconded with those conditions. Uh, Mr. Fratalla.
Aye.
Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Fowler.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. All right, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck is right.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much, everybody.
All right.
I appreciate it.
Aye.
All right, that takes care of agenda item C. Moving on to agenda item D, ten twenty three, ten twenty nine, East Street. Uh, it's the continuation of site plant special permit, use special permit, land disturbance permit, special permit continued from our last meeting. Do we have anyone here for ten twenty three, ten twenty nine?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman. David Plunkett representing the applicants. And we have Mira Cousins, Jim Hamley, Dick Cuco, and, uh, Mr. Ting, uh, all here for the applicant. Uh, since the last meeting, uh, Mr. Chairman, there has been a major.
Sorry, just one second, Mr. Plunkett. Can I just remind everybody if they could just mute their, their volume so we're not picking up background music or background sound, I mean? Thank you. Mr. Plunkett, you're all set.
There's been the, uh, feedback for the fence and I think that there's a revised plan will satisfy all the board members. We'll leave that for, uh, display a little later on. I'll, at this point, just defer to Mr. Hamley, Ms. Cousins to review what's happened relative to the interaction with, uh, DPW and I believe that there's a final resolution, so uh, it's our hope that this will be able to be wrapped up tonight and it's a, uh, a great project for this location. Uh, the roaches, as we've discussed before, are long-term, uh, members of the business community. They're going to be moving from a Main Street, which was something that the town had been looking for, and going to the site, which will be a great, uh, fit and a great improvement to the location. So that I'll turn it over to.
Hi there, Mira Cousins, civil design consultant. So we submitted revised plans last week that we believe address all of engineering's technical comments as well as feedback we got from this board at the last meeting. So we're hoping to close this project out tonight. Um, so we got a review letter from engineering on last Friday. Um, there were three comments in that letter that I would like to address. Um, so the first comment was in regard to the existing utility pole that will need to be relocated since it's located in the center of the western proposed driveway. Um, the applicant will coordinate the new pole location with DPW and will add that note to the final plan. Um, the second comment is in regard to the fire truck turning plan. Um, it's our understanding that the fire department has no additional comments with the design of the project. And they have stated in an email that they'll confirm the fire truck access during the construction phase. Um, the last comment is related to stormwater, specifically the fill soil material located within the area of the porous pavement. Um, to give you a bit of a background, uh, we submitted the plans to the town last Thursday and around four P M. we got a call from engineering about concerns of the existing fill material located at the proposed porous pavement. Um, luckily, we were able to quickly schedule additional soil testing, um, on Friday afternoon, which was witnessed by Mr. Hardeman and were able to rush the soil samples to the lab that afternoon. Um, so we got the results of the civil analysis earlier today, um, which we sent over to Mr. Hardeman. And we believe we've come to a resolution on this matter. Um, we'll add a note to the final plan that the contractor will remove the compact silt layer located at the bottom of the cap within the footprint of the porous pavement. Um, so the other update we made to the plan, um, is the fence layout along East Street. Um, we took the feedback we got from this board from the last meeting and, uh, Mr. Cuco has put together a revised fence layout plan that should be included, um, in your package and I'll let Mr. Cuco, uh, talk about that.
Richard, you're muted.
Good evening. The feedback that we got from the last meeting was, uh, that, um, you know, the fence might have been a little stark because it was white and that the, uh, we had the, uh, abreviated stepped back and you really couldn't see them very well coming up along the road and there was only a few of them. Um, so we went back and looked at some samples of fences, um, and have decided that it'll either be a tan fence or a, uh, a grayish colored fence. Uh, the fence comes colored. It's not something that we paint. So that it has a color that is embedded completely through the entire surface so that it doesn't, uh, paid, it doesn't fade or it doesn't peel, which is something that we wanted to make sure that the fence always looked good, um, moving forward. Uh, and then, um, let's see if I can share my screen here. So what we did is that, you know, every fourth, uh, fourth section of fence, we're taking a section of fence out rather than cut it and we'll have that, uh, infilled with abreviations. The, the additional, um, benefit here is does. benefit here is those abovites will grow. Uh, you know, th- this is just showing them, you know, like maybe a year or two after they're installed, but, they'll grow, so that when you're coming down, you won't just see this consistent, uh, horizontal line. Besides the fact that we're having these put in, uh, more frequently than we had shown before. Uh, as they, as they mature and they'll puff up, uh, it'll give a, a breakup of the sightline as you're coming down there. I put in a, um, a, uh, Lexus, uh, RX three hundred that I happen to have a template for, just to give you a, an idea of, of the, uh, proportions. But, uh, you'll have the side, we're putting in the sidewalk, we're putting in the, uh, curbing, we're putting in the, uh, wall, and I think that between the color and the breakup, and I want you to make sure you keep in mind that, as I said, as the abovites grow, um, we'll probably end up topping them when they get to be about ten or twelve feet so that they don't, um, get, uh, wind cycle, and, you know, bend over with the snow, but, uh, that'll break it up, um, as you're coming up, uh, down, uh, E Street. So we think that that, um, obviously, the first year or two, y- you know, we won't have that vertical relief, but as these things go over a foot a year, um, we'll be able to, um, we'll be able to show that, uh, relief. So when you look at it, you're coming down and you got, you know, just between the two driveways, we got three sections and then one, two, three, four, then we got another five sections, uh, between the two driveways and we follow it up with, uh, two more sections, so, um, we think that that'll really do the trick, especially when you take into consideration, nothing else on that street, um, i- it's like that, and we don't want to get into a situation where two years down the road, people are saying, oh, you know, we don't like looking at the trucks, uh, you know? If you notice when you go by their property on Main Street, everything is fenced off, scrubbed up and gated, so that it, it's, it's, it's very attractive when you're going by, you know, i- it is a heavy industrial area, but, um, the, my clients are making a, um, conscious effort to, uh, make this as, as pleasing, uh, visibly as possible, uh, and, uh, just, uh, that, um, a side note, the colored vinyl fences double the price of white, so, um, but they're, they're willing to, uh, to do that, uh, to hope, uh, hopefully satisfy the concerns that the board has.
Alright, you guys all set otherwise?
I believe we're good.
Alright, open it up to the board, we'll start with Mr. Delaney.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, I was, to look at the, the change a little bit is even better than, I was ready to approve what they had last week, of our last meeting, uh, because it just makes, I don't know if you have the same feeling I do, but it makes the street look clean. You know, when you look at the trucking company, uh, that other building that used to be a gas station or whatever, you know, there's nothing in front, you just see, you just see what the buildings and I, you know, you can even see their rubbish barrels. I think, I think the change is good. I am definitely for it. But I will also go along, if the board seems to think there's another way to make it better, or whatever, I will go along with that as well. But right now, I think the plan that we have is good. And my second thought is that I actually like the white fence, but, we all have opinions, so I will go from here, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Because that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, actually, if you go down to, uh, the condominium project on E Street, going towards Andover on the left-hand side, uh, the first one, not the second one. Uh, they have the beige fence, I'm not sa- I'm not opting for the beige over the gray, doesn't matter to me, either one would be fine. But that will give you an idea of how nicely it looks. Um, and that's in the ground right now. Otherwise, everything else that I've discussed this evening, I'm in favor of, and, uh, look forward to working, uh, for the, uh, sign the plan.
Alright, Mr. Fattalia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just had a couple of questions and one was, one of the waivers you're looking for, Mr. Hanley, is for the no, um, landscaping within the parking area, uh, inside the fence. So can you explain why you would not, lo- don't want any landscaping inside the fence?
So it's, it's no landscaping inside the fence, well-
Were you looking for no landscape buffer in the, um, in the parking area, interior parking lot landscaping?
Yeah, I mean, for the most part, this is a, heavy commercial use specific to vehicles, uh, that are only gonna be there really, that are gonna provide services to, to, uh, houses outside, right? So, the idea is that there's, there's not, uh, pedestrians and customers really, uh, coming to this site. It's really kind of where they meet and, and get their, uh, uh, materials to then go and, and do their job. Um, so, you know, we'd rather take that money, uh, that we'd normally put in for landscaping, and try to, uh, pretty up the, the E Street corridor there with the more expensive fence, and the additional plantings that we have there, we thought it was just a better way to, uh, um, to approach the site landscaping.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Fattalia, basically what you were talking about under that, where that waiver is, it'd be like landscaping on these little pods that stick out over here. Um, so, cause with this, this, it's gonna be grass in here, this is all gonna be, uh, you know, grass. All these other areas that aren't paved will be grass, so, the waiver is just for landscaping that you might have here, we got a painted island, so that you're talking about maybe a couple of trees and shrubs out here. But the rest is gonna be all, uh, grass, so it's not like it's gonna be barren.
Yeah, okay. I'm just thinking if you're looking at keeping the site inside as pretty as it is outside, that you do some type of landscaping in the parking area, just so that, yeah, as you leave or enter, or whoever it may be coming in and out would, have the benefit of that as well, so, um-
Well, we have, we have it on the two entrances, we have our landscaping here. And then everything else is, is not really visible, so, but it will be grass, so, I think it'll look nice.
Okay. So my second question, and it goes to, um, what Ms. Cousins said earlier about the fire department, so, um, I had read the fire department's letter that we, that we got from, um, Mr. Sewicki, so, um, and I guess I have a problem with it, uh, from the board's side and from, I guess, the fire department's side, so, my issue is reading the letter, it seems to me that's a very easy auto-turn in and out of the facility that you have. So, but I don't see the fire department responding in that, in that capacity, saying that they have a, they don't have a problem with it. So it's comments, uh, we will reserve the right to confirm the fire department access in and out of any and all entrances, you know, uh, at a later date, I think it is, or something like, something to that effect, so, um, so I had emailed the, uh, lieutenant today, looking for clarification and clarity as to, as to what his comments were, and given the fact that we rely on his expertise as far as fire trucks coming in and out, that I thought he shouldn't be as vague as he is, especially in this particular case. So, um, I don't think it's that great of an approval, I know that they will come down at, at another, another date, to, um, drive the fire trucks through. But I told him that I thought that we, as a, as a planning board, need his, his, um, confirmation that access in and out by fire trucks would be, you know, somewhat, uh, accessible, so that we in turn can make a decision as planning board members, so. Uh, and I asked him for clarification on that, um, uh, Mr. Johnson, I think I sent you a copy as well as Mr. Sadwick, but never had any response back from him, so, um, so I had a problem with that fact, and I don't know whether we have, Mr. Sadwick deal with the issue, or Ms. McGinty as the town planner, trying to get a better, um, response from the fire department regarding these matters. It's not the first time we've had an issue with that, at least I have had an issue with his decisions, and being vague and, and, and the, and the trucks being able to get in and out of, uh, areas that we're looking to, to develop, so, um, you know, this one here, I think is an easy in and out, but, um-
Well, Mr. Fattalia, if I could.
Sure.
The, the turning templates all work, and, and that-
I agree, Mr. Cuco.
And they've been approved by that. What, what I believe the lieutenant is saying, and we have no problem with it, is that when we get the, the rough pavement binder put in, in these locations, he would like to come in with the fire truck just to be like belt and suspenders. Um, and if for some reason one of the radii needs to be fattened up a little bit, uh, it would be taken care of at that time before concrete sidewalks are poured or, you know, um, granite curbing is put in. And so we don't have a problem with that, we was, we know that our turning radiuses work, uh, by using auto-turn. Um, I'm wondering if they're gonna do that on some of the Main Street projects that, uh, the town is using, but, uh, we have no problem with that, and then, uh, I think his, his comment was that, and then to make sure, before they would give us an occupancy permit, they'll come in and make another final sweep through. And I think that is just so that in case, somebody didn't build it according to the plan, so it works on paper. Uh, they want to make sure that it works on the ground, and rather than wait to have an ASB built on, and then find out that, oh, you know, we gotta move, uh, one curb radius rounding over six or eight inches, um, then it's kind of like too late. So, I mean, my client has no problem with that, he, you know, he'd like to make the entrances wider than twenty-four feet, but, uh, you know, that's what your, that's what your regulations, uh, call for, so, uh, it, I read that at first and I was, first I was quite upset when I saw that letter, but then, when I started to, to delve into it and look at it, uh, in relationship to, um, the project we did for, um, Mr. Gordon over there on, um,
Maine and Colonial?
Ma- Maine and Colonial. Um, they came through, everything was approved, everything was done by auto-turn, and they had a wheel that came over the curbing. Well, luckily, the sidewalks hadn't been poured yet, so it was just a matter of one day for Mr. Bradley to go out there and, and move the curbing, uh, and, uh, and then satisfy the fire department, and then we poured the sidewalk, so, uh, I, I look at it more as belt and suspenders, uh, than being something that's critical.
Well, I know that's your, your point of view, Mr. Cuco, but as a planning board member, I would like to make sure that this is, um, is approved by the fire department and then, so we can, so we can approve it on our end as well, you know, so-
Well, w- we're never gonna get this project approved, Mr. Fattalia, because you're never gonna get that letter, and we cannot force them to give us that letter.
Well, I, I would never let you guys not get approved because of that situation, you know, and, and, and I wouldn't let that, uh, hinder my judgment as far as making a decision on the fire truck, and I, and I think the auto-turn analysis was very, very present there when you showed the, showed the plan, and I agree that you think it's fine, and I think it's fine as well. I was just taken back by the fact that the letter was very vague and not, not really, um, convincing for me saying, yeah, the fire department approves the auto-turn for that access in and out as shown on your plan, so, but, uh, so, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set, but, just, uh, just a concern I had.
Thank you, Mr. Fattalia.
Mr. Chairman, may I add something?
Yes.
Um, so I d- I did speak to Mr. Sewicki last, last week to address that concern, the overall concern about, um, just needing more clear guidance from the fire department. Um, so we did have that discussion. Um, so I did explain that the planning board would like a more clear, um, response from the fire department, um, and, um, I was told by, um, Mrs. Lauer that, you know, um, Mr. Sewicki had seen the latest plans and was all set with them, so, um, just wanted to add that information.
Oh, was his comments anything r- uh, relative to the fact that he would try to give us a very, a better, you know, uh, concise answer?
No?
I c- I can't, no, he, I can't speak to that, you know, I just communicated that, you know, the board would like some more, specifics, so, um, but, you know, this is the email that we got as a result of that, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I just offer one thing on, on this, uh, kinda how this thing has kind of evolved over the last couple of years here is, it used to be when we would do the auto-turn, it was to confirm that once the vehicle got, into the site, it didn't get to a dead end, right? We can make a movement around it and then it could get out. We're, we're required to provide an access drive that's twenty-four feet and has thirty feet radius. But there, there's nothing else like we can do unless we come to you for a waiver, right? So, it seems like every project now that we come into, we're analyzing this intersection with the roadway, which I understand, like, the four, we don't wanna make, wanna make sure the vehicle's not going over the, you know, uh, ninety percent of the opposing lane or something. But it was always, can you get the vehicle in, in, in not get it stuck somewhere? So you had provision, whether it was a cul-de-sac, three-point turn, then you get out of the site. Um, and that was because we're kind of, uh, regulated on how we actually approach and enter the, 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 uh, the main road. Um, I feel like a lot of our conversations now, back at like this intersection, we, I can't do anything unless we come to you for a waiver. We have a twenty-four foot wide, uh, driveway, and we have thirty foot radiuses. Um, so just a li- I guess a little context for, to think about how maybe we can improve this system maybe.
Alright, thank you. So for me, I mean, I guess just to, to, uh, put a bow on this one, I think the, the problem for us is gonna be, one, this has just been sort of the standard language we get back, always, and that's because for the fire department, and I'm not speaking for them, this is just my impression of it, is that, they don't, they don't have as concerned with how it looks on paper. That's just something that they get and it, you know, it looks fine to them, great. But in the real world is the only place it matters to them, and they're not gonna lock themselves into an opinion, that sounds like they're done, when, when it comes to the real world, they get out there and say, we need you to do this, because something's not right. Um, we're not fitting right, we're not getting in right. So their real only concern is leaving themselves the wiggle room to deal with the real world. As much as we'd like them to, you know, I, I, I think a great version of this would simply be, you know, the turn radius, you know, uh, information submitted appears to ma- you know, appears to meet the requirements, final decisions will be made in the field, you know, that would be simpler, but the problem is you're fighting with, the letter we've been getting probably for, I don't know how many decades, probably, and that's, they're just, you know what I mean, that's, they're not gonna wanna change, what they're saying, because they really only care, what is it gonna look like in the real world? Which then goes to, you know, the comment that was just made, which is, you know, the turn radius is really just to show, you're not getting stuck, and that you're, you know, your, your entrances are what they're supposed to be. If it turns out that when the truck tries to come in, you need some tweaking, they're gonna leave themselves their, the room to make that change. I, I mean, it'd be nice if we could get just a cleaned up version of the letter, but I think this is just, what we get and I think we sort of understand, or we're gonna have to understand what it means, which is, they haven't told us they have a problem, which for us, we're supposed to take as they don't have a problem, and won't have one until it's built, if they ever have one at all. That, that's the only way I can take it, I guess, um, for these, so, you know. Other than that, uh, for what's been presented, I'm fine, it cleared up the last bits of information, or last bit of outstanding stuff that we needed, so with that, I'm okay with, um, we'll open it up to the, uh, anyone in the audience who wants to call in, Brian, do we have anybody on the line?
We have no callers, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, so we'll give them time to catch up while we take a look at the waivers and draft conditions.
Mr. Chairman, do we have our consultant on board here? I think we do, right? Does he have any comments for us?
Uh, we had the consultant's letter, I didn't realize, do we have the consultant here?
I think we do, right?
I think that's only if there were, uh-
Yeah, I don't-
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I mean, the letter we got didn't indicate any concern, so I suspect that we're all set with them.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, so the consultant is in case there was a question, so if there's no question-
We have our consultant in case there wasn't a question on the soil.
Okay.
Alright, so-
Would you have him with the glasses, he's on your team?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so, back to the draft waivers and draft conditions, does, do any of the members have any issues with the draft conditions? Or draft waiver as, um, drafted up?
So, Mr. Chairman, um,
Yes.
I just want to add, um, I did get feedback from the applicant today on the conditions- So, Mr. Chairman, um, I just want to add, um, I did get feedback from the applicant today on the conditions. So I made some minor tweaks to it. So I can share that content now if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay. Would you like to see the waivers first?
Why don't we start with the waivers? Probably easy to get those out of the way first.
So the waivers, I did not make any changes to, and it's one through, um, one through six. So I can just scroll down.
Once we get those up on the screen.
Are you seeing them?
I don't see, yeah, no.
Let me try that again.
There we go. I think it's coming up now.
Yes.
There we go. All right. So do any of the members have any issue with the six waiver conditions or the six waivers as presented? Mr. Fowler?
I'm all set.
Mr. Fataia?
All set.
Mr. Delaney?
All set.
All right. I am as well. The applicant has no issue. I take it.
Right.
All right. Let's move on to the draft conditions then if we can. While we're pulling that up, Brian, I suspect that we are caught up and still no callers.
You are correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Just checking.
So, Mr. Chairman, I made some edits to this today and it's in the red line version. So the, in the red. And it's items one through, uh, 10. So I can just scroll through that.
Okay. So the change in number two is just to note, as Mr. Kukul pointed out earlier, the color of those fences is not painted. It's actually the color of the fence throughout. So that's the tan to the gray.
Yep, that's correct.
And then in number three, the change is the height of the building with the fence being struck out in the language.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. There are no other revisions in there, correct?
No other revisions. Um, I didn't know about item number 10, if that needs to stay or not. I'll let the applicant speak to that after. You have any questions?
So, so that's what we did on, uh, we, we, that's what we did on Friday and then received the results today. So that, that was the back and forth between DPW and our office over the last day or so. So that, that's been addressed.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just believe relative to paragraph 10 is an ongoing process that the owner will, that the applicant, when he becomes owner, will have to continue to deal with. So it's not really a matter of the special permit as much as it is, you know, compliance with the overlaying, you know, with the overriding review process that they will be part of and that the company has recognized this and it's part of the, I think, part of the finance pack also.
So does anybody have any issue with striking 10 then?
No.
Nope.
Nope.
So we'll strike 10 and bring it down to nine total conditions. Excuse me. Sorry to cough at everybody there. All right. All right. With that, um, and since there is, I believe, still no callers calling in. What is the pleasure of the board as to this hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
All right. A motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Mr. Fowler?
Aye.
Mr. Fataia?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, four zero. All right. Start with, why don't we do this and get this one out of the way? Actually, no, we'll start with the waivers. Let's start with the waivers. We have a motion on the waivers as discussed this evening and as appear on the screen.
Still moved.
Uh, we have a motion to grant the waivers as discussed and as depicted on the screen this evening numbering one to six. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Uh, Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Mr. Fataia?
Aye.
Mr. Fowler?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, four zero. Here are waivers. Now, as to the site plan special permit, use special permit, uh, special permit, uh, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to accept and approve as submitted.
All right.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. And there's the land disturbance waiver.
Yeah, I thought, I think we have to do that by itself, right?
Yeah. So you kind of feel like to, yeah. So.
I think, I think so. I think it's just cleaner that way. So, um, so we have a motion to approve with the draft condi-, I mean, with the conditions, one through nine discussed this evening and depicted on the screen while we were discussing. I have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Mr. Fowler?
Aye.
Mr. Fataia?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, four zero. Now, as to the land disturbance pyramid, do we have a motion on the land disturbance pyramid?
So moved. Approved. Second.
All right. So we have a motion made and seconded. Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Mr. Fowler?
Aye.
Mr. Fataia?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, four zero. All right. I believe we've crossed all the Ts, dotted the Is. Good luck, gentlemen, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, board members, uh, we appreciate it. And the applicants are looking very forward to expanding the business, sustaining the town. And it's a great win-win for both sides here. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Excellent. Thank you.
Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Kukul.
Uh, just to follow up on the point that Mr. Fataia made, which is a great point on the fire truck. These people will be investing well over a million dollars and I hate to see them have a million dollars worth of improvements done and then have somebody come out and say, hey, you know what? I can't get my fire truck in there. So anything that you could do to try to get a more definitive answer in the future would be appreciated not only by your side of the table, but this side of the table as well. So thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to agenda item E, uh, continuation of administrative actions, uh, E1, 325 Marshall Street sidewalk fee discussion. Do we have anyone here for Marshall Street?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Kim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants here with Matt.
Mr. Hanley, can you speak up a little bit? We can't hear you too well.
You can't hear me?
No.
No.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry about that. So, uh, now I'm going to yell, I guess. Um, Kim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants with, uh, Matt Ginsburg and Arnie Martel Jr. So we're here tonight.
Mr. Hanley, just before you get going, I'll just let the board know and I'll bring it up when it gets to my turn. But I also went out with the two applicants to walk the site and discuss this, um, about two weeks ago-ish at this point. So just so the other board members know that I, I did have a conversation with the applicants onsite to look at this and discuss it about that, about that time, about two weeks ago. Mr. Hanley, sorry, all yours.
Okay. Um, so we're here tonight for a discussion about the sidewalk fee in lieu. You'll recall it was just about a year ago, give or take, that we received your approval for 325 Marshall Street, which is now Terramore, uh, Drive. Um, at the time, a waiver was, uh, was requested and granted to allow for construction of the sidewalks on one side of the roadway. Um, the roadway is currently under construction. And, uh, we're here tonight to talk about the fee in lieu. So I put together, uh, my office put together the letter, uh, middle of last week, give or take, and kind of walked through the critical things to consider in the, uh, in the determination of the fee and, fee in lieu. Um, so I'm just going to, uh, walk through this letter, uh, and, um, if I can share my screen, I'll share my screen. So I think this is the fee, uh, the letter rather. Um, so essentially we have, uh, uh, the backing is in the subdivision rules and regulations, section 9.5.5, which basically says that it's, uh, the fee is specific to the cost of the construction of such wave sidewalks. Not the cost for the town to, uh, construct an equal amount of sidewalk elsewhere in town. We, I, I took a look at what the total overall length of sidewalks that we are requesting waivers for. And once we adjust it so that we eliminate the driveways along that side of the road, it's approximately 2,612 feet. If you've been onsite recently, you know that the roadway is under construction. Um, the entire site is cleared and grubbed. Uh, it, it is, uh, is excavated out and there's sufficient lumen and seed onsite to, uh, to dress up the sidewalks once placed. So those items are, are, are part of the roadway construction and really can't be uh, added on to the fee in lieu as a contractor cost here. In addition, when they're out there building the road and if you see what they're actually doing, they, they don't just put the 24, uh, 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 feet of gravel. They kind of over, uh, spread it to allow them to put the curves in as well. So conservatively, uh, speaking, I think about half of that five foot wide gravel that's required to be under the sidewalk is placed as part of the roadway. We talked a little bit about mass DOT prices the last time. I kind of went through this and, and essentially those prices generally run about 50% higher to account for, uh, prevailing wage that we get from private, uh, local contractors. Fortunately, in this one too, we're also able to provide you with the actual bid, uh, or proposal to place the sidewalks that are part of the approved, uh, uh, project. Um, and those have a unit price associated with the, uh, with the, uh, with the construction of those sidewalks. So at the end of the day, uh, we look at a few things here, but it ends up being, uh, the six inches of bank run gravel, the three inches of processed gravel. Um, we take about 50% of that quantity to account for the, uh, to account for the roadway construction. And then we take about 50% of the unit price from DOT to account for the non-pervailing wage. And we have, uh, uh, an actual proposal to do sidewalks on this site that carries the asphalt in the fine grading. So if my math is correct here, it comes out to about $17 a foot. It's $44,165 for the fee, uh, in lieu of the 2,612 feet of sidewalk. So I provided the cover letter, this construction estimate, and then the actual paving, um, proposal for the sidewalks that was provided to the, uh, to the contractor, um, a little while ago. So that, that's kind of the, uh, that's kind of the discussion. If you have any questions, but be glad to try to answer them.
All right. Uh, let's start with Mr. Fowler. We have Mr. Fowler?
I don't see him, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Fowler is having some, uh, technical difficulty that I'm working with him, uh, now.
All right. Then we will try, move to Mr. Fataia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Hanley, um, the town engineer is aware of these facts and figures and costs?
Uh, we submitted this last week. I've not talked to DPW directly about, about this. No. So I, I can't confirm that.
Okay. So what do you think his comments will be regarding the, the actual amount of footage and the, and the price that's provided? Seems pretty fair to me, but.
Yeah, the amount of footage is, is, uh, definitive. I mean, we can pull that right off the plans. That's pretty straightforward. Um, the, the logic behind the estimate and the quantities was kind of relative to the, uh, the previous one, uh, that we did on, on Livingston Street. Um, it's pretty consistent with the, the thought process on that. I can tell you that we, we provided this, uh, to the town. I think it was either Wednesday or Thursday. And I know that's, that's late. But it was an administrative action. We're still going to get some direction on that tonight.
Okay. You know, I have no problem with the fact you kind of explained it pretty, pretty concisely here to us as far as all the extra work that was done and, uh, the, uh, the figure seems logical to me and, uh, I'm willing to okay that figure tonight. So I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fataia. Mr. Fowler, I hear you are back.
Yes, I am.
You next. You're all set as well. All right. Mr. Delaney?
If they, if that's their number and they want to pay it, that's okay with me. I'm all set.
All right. So as I mentioned to the, the members, I, I did go out onsite, um, with the applicants and had them walk me through sort of the real world version of what we went through on that other project on Livingston to try to understand the, the numbers that are being submitted and, you know, what it actually looks like in the field and what they're talking about when they're talking about, you know, some of the pricing that goes into that DP, DPW, I'm sorry, the mass DOT based number that we're getting from the town engineer, uh, in terms of where they are, you know, if they were to actually provide the sidewalk. So I, I have a, I think I have a better understanding of what that, what that really means. And, uh, I'll have a, you know, makes it a little bit easier to understand when they're bringing in these, um, these different numbers to, to understand why they, why it is that, that some of the numbers built into the, the one we get out of the town engineer are not, or what, what the, what the disconnect between those numbers might be. You know, and then add to that the fact as we've discussed before, we, we, you know, we waived the sidewalk for a reason. Because we thought that, you know, receiving a fee for, you know, one side of the sidewalk was sensible because otherwise you're going to end up with sidewalk that goes nowhere and does nothing because you've already got the other side. This isn't, you know, this isn't a project that's along one of the main roads in town where you'd be losing out having the developer build a sidewalk that the town later on is going to do themselves. There's no reason I can possibly imagine in which the town would go in and build the other sidewalk on this project. On top of which, you know, even though the link we're talking about, there are sections of this that wouldn't even be able to be constructed if it was actually put in anyways. So waiving the sidewalk on that side, you know, doubly makes sense to me. Otherwise you're going to have dash, dash mark sidewalking throughout a project that already has a sidewalk on the other side and gets no one anywhere. So, you know, for our reasons for why we waive it and the basis for which they come up with the number, I don't have an issue. So, um, you know, if the other board members are, are fine as well, um, I have, I have, I have no issue either. I think the, the number that's submitted makes sense and the explanation for why it makes sense is valid. So does anybody have anything else they wish to add?
Also.
No?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
So what, so what do we need out of, what do we need out of us then? We need a, a motion to accept the, the, the amount and the total or the, just the total amount, correct? That's what we did last time? Doesn't really matter what the per foot price really is. We're just looking at the total. So.
Yes. Yes, Mr. Chairman. You would do a motion for that. And I just want to state for the record that the town, the, um, town engineer has not submitted a sidewalk calculation fee to the community development department. So we don't have anything on record from the town engineer. This was submitted to us. I received it at 4:00 PM on Thursday. So I don't think the town engineer has even got a chance to look at this document.
Which, which is, which may be true, but.
I just want to say that for the record.
We approved the, the, the waving of the sidewalk almost a year ago. And I don't, while, while we have to, you know, we do get the recommendations, it's still up to the board for what we do.
Correct.
Regardless. So.
That's correct. I just want to state for the record, um, the information that I have. So it's clear.
All right. So with that then, do we have a motion to, uh, accept the fee of 44,165, um, as the fee for the, uh, sidewalk previously waived by the board for this project at 325 Marshall Street?
So moved.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Fataia?
Aye.
Mr. Fowler?
Aye.
Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well, four zero. All right, gentlemen, you're all set. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right. Moving on to core, uh, actually old business. Do we have any old business that any of the members wish to discuss? All right. Hearing none. Any new business any of the members wish to discuss?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have a comment and a suggestion that. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have a comment and a suggestion that we, that we try to find out an update on some of the existing sites that are outstanding and not, not improved upon that we have approved permits for. So one being the Discount Madness site up on Main Street. It's been vacant for months and nothing has transpired. And just to try to get an idea of what, maybe a listing of what sites we have approved in town for the record, so we know. There's a couple other ones on Main Street as well, so. Just, I know we have the one down across from Hafner's.
2131.
2131 Main Street, and we have one across from Discount Madness as well. But I don't know if that's the full listing of all permits that have been approved by us and still no, no action being taken on them, so, but.
So not, not counting the ones we've just recently, like, done extensions for, correct? You just mean ones we don't know that are just floating out there?
Yes, yeah, exactly. Just so I know myself, I know there's a couple there, but maybe I've missed a few. Does anybody else know of any other ones?
Well, I know we discussed North Street hotels, so.
Right, plus the other North Street project that we approved, but I mean, we just did that. So I, I guess, I guess before we, before we put, you know, the, the, the ask out, if we just clarify really what we mean, like, do we want things that have been outstanding for over a certain amount of time? Or every, because I mean, I just don't know how many approved projects there could possibly be floating out there that are, you know, still within their right to build, but, you know, aren't doing anything. Because I don't want to make a, a giant, you know, workload.
I don't hear them, Mr. Chairman. I just want to, I mean, have a running list just for the record. That's all, just so that we know that 2131 Main Street is still outstanding and, and not, we gave him an extension a while ago, and we haven't heard a word about starting, and, and if he's not going to start, fine. And when is he going to start? Is Discount Madness going to start or not start, or where, or is it a dead issue? So.
They took the fence down. At Discount Madness, they took the fence down. I assumed that they were going to start.
So, Mr. Delaney, what happened was, in that, in that scenario, was I had called, reached out to Alex saying that the fence was down and that it was a safety issue during a snowstorm or a windstorm, and that we should notify the owners, the applicant, that the fence is down. Had to be a week or so that went by that nothing was done to the fence, and all of a sudden it's down, and now it's, now the site is wide open. So. So that, so it is wide open and, and nothing happening. So there was equipment there at one time, now it's gone. So.
Well, even on 2131 Main Street, they put a full sale sign on it, and they made it a gravel pit. You know, down the, as a matter of fact, we talked about this before. And when Mr. Fowler was the chairman at that time, he says, we're not going to use Route 38 as a gravel pit, but nothing has been done, nothing, nothing's moved. You know, we all commented on that before. And Mr. Fowler made it a point that we were not going to allow gravel pits to exist on Route 38.
All right, and do you have an idea of what Mr. Fattaya is looking for then?
Um, kind of. So, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I can ask the building department what their current status is of applications. In some instances, I'm not going to be able to get an answer for different sites. It's going to probably depend on different, with the building departments, we could, building permits, we can see if there's a permit pulled, et cetera, but in terms of if someone is selling a property and that type of thing, that's not necessarily information that I can get, current information on. So. I, I think maybe I'll have to follow up with Mr. Fattaya. And then if there's any other board members with specific locations, I can start with that, but. The town, we do kind of track things internally, but, you know, it's, there, there's a lot of different special permits out there that have been approved over the years, so. I'm not, it's something we can work on, but I think it's going to be an ongoing list. You know, it might not be 100% complete. It's a, it's a pretty big ask, so.
All right.
How many do you think there, there's outstanding? I mean, I can't be thinking more than 10 or 12. I would think maybe, unless I'm mistaken, so. I don't know.
That further, you know.
I guess I, I guess I would more look to find out when we approved the permit and, and, and how long it's been since, since we actually approved it, so. And whether anything is going to take place, you know, between now and then, or between the time it was approved until now, and whether a permit, a building permit was pulled at all, so, which I'm thinking not, so, but, okay.
Yeah, I can certainly pull that information, provide when something was approved, if there's a permit, building permit currently, yes or no. And then maybe provide some notes, but you know, for each site, I'm not, it'll depend on the site, you know, how, how much information I can get. So.
Sure.
Sometimes the property owners change, et cetera, so it's, it's a little difficult to track.
So let me ask you, Ms. McGinty, in the, in the case of the Discount Madness site, where we had a, a fence that was flipped over, I mean, we must have a contact person to get a hold of in case there's an emergency or something on site, right?
Yeah, we contacted them, so that's something I will have to follow up on.
Okay.
You know, if, you know, the next planning board meeting, if there's anything else, are there any other sites like that, please let me know.
Sure.
Mr. Fattaya?
Yes.
So I can give you a status on the Discount Madness site. So they have submitted their plans from the fire department. We're waiting on the community development checklist, which is at the DPW. We can't move forward with that until we get all the, the pre-signatures. So that, that's been outstanding for probably about three months. So I don't know what their holdup is, but they have applied for building permits, but they have not submitted the proper paperwork.
Okay, I had heard, I had heard there was a financing issue, but.
Yes, yes, I think that's because they have to pay all the sewer and water ties before the DPW will sign off. And then the, the site across from Discount Madness, they have also applied. Again, we're waiting on the green sheets to be, the community development checklist to be signed off.
Okay. Well, that's helpful. Thank you, Don.
No problem. 2131, nothing has happened with that. They have not submitted anything. North Street, they've submitted applications, but again, community development checklists have not been submitted. 960 Main Street, they're getting ready to submit for the back building because I know that they came before you guys to try to change the front building, but.
Sure.
They came, they've come in within the last week, so they've started that process.
Great. All right, that's an update. Thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, that takes care of new business correspondence. We lose Ms. McGinty?
So in the packets, there is items for 725 Main Street and for 307 Old Boston Road, so I can answer any questions the board might have.
Do any of the members have any questions on either of these two?
No, just ongoing repairs, correct, or updates we need to get done?
So they have outstanding issues from the asphalt, and then my two items were regarding the landscape outstanding items. So these two items have been withdrawn from, from the agenda. I have not given, been given a reason or when they would be put back on the agenda. So that's all the information I have.
Mr. Chairman, Dick Kukoc here.
Yep.
On both of those projects, you recall on 307 Old Boston Road, the DPW requested that the pavement be cut back and the lawn extended. So that one's going to take a little bit of time to get that work resolved. 307 Old Boston Road, so rather than have it on your agenda every week, you know, we asked it to be taken off because it's an administrative action. And on Jerome Place, the sign, there's a temporary sign there that's being removed, and the permanent sign is on order, and that's going to be put up, and there's a few items that needed to be addressed. So we figured we'd bring that back in once the sign was done, so you folks could just, you know, get it all done and not have to look at it every two weeks.
All right. Okay, so anybody else have anything on either of those two?
All set.
All set.
All right, so hearing none. That brings us to adjournment.
So moved.
All right, we have motion to adjourn.
But before we rush off.
Yes, Mr. Fowler?
I might, I'm sure we all feel the same way that it'll be a pleasure to look at everybody's face and, and to have a discussion one-on-one. It'll be nice.
That's what, June 14th, Mr. Fowler, correct?
Yes.
June 14th, 7 o'clock, you know, be there.
I have to get out my Bob Fowler clothes again now. When I got on the planning board, I said to Bob, I have to find clothes that look like yours so I can put my tie on and look good. So now I can go back to that section of the closet. I might have to dust them off, but I have to go back to that closet. Put my Bob Fowler clothes.
Well, as Mr. Fowler pointed out, our next meeting will be in person at Town Hall on June 14th. We look forward to seeing anyone who has any business before the planning board at that time, as well as our fellow board members for the first time officially in person other than town meeting. But I think we have a motion to adjourn on the table. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Mr. Fowler.
Aye.
Mr. Fattaya.
Aye.
Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. All right.
Steve. Anna, Anna, are you going to be with us anymore? What's, what's your status?
One question.
Hold on.
Can I ask one question? Are we, are they going to limit the amount of people that can come in? Like, the, about this and so forth, is there?
I don't believe so, because at that point, by the time we come back, I think we're, we'll be fine.
We'll be on it. Okay, I just wanted.
I believe.
Okay, I, I just wanted to.
Mr. Johnson, I was asking about Anna, or whether she, how long she's going to be with us, so.
So my maternity leave starts at end of July, give or take, so I hope to be here for another two meetings.
Oh, great.
So, but we'll see.
Much like with the fire department, she's going to leave that open to. Very good. All right.
Hopefully, hopefully she doesn't need the ambulance.
Right.
All right, thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you again for all your help, Brian, on the electronics of our last year-plus change.
No problem.
Hopefully, we will not need this process again anytime soon, but knowing that we know how it works and that you can make it work for us if need be, if we have to go back to this at some point for some other reason, we can. But we will happily come back to see everybody in person and hopefully stick that way for some time to come. But thank you again for all your help.
Yeah, thank you, Brian. No problem, everyone.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and we'll see you at the next meeting.